Good evening and welcome to the Board of Education Regular Meeting, Wednesday, August 28th. Are we in compliance with open meeting laws?
Yes, we are.
Would you please call the roll?
Herzog?
Here.
Hough?
Here.
Smeltney?
Here.
Wright?
Here.
Wyman?
Here.
Carlin?
Here.
DeWitt?
Here.
We have a quorum. Thank you very much, and now if you'd all stand and join me in the Fledge of Allegiance. The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And Dr. Davis, the land acknowledgement, please.
Yes, as we gather today, we want to acknowledge that in Oshkosh, we are on the ancestral homelands of the Ho'chuk Nation and Menominee Indian Tribe of Wisconsin, who lived along the western shores of Lake Onebago, Wisconsin's largest freshwater lake entirely within its borders. We acknowledge these indigenous sovereign communities who have stewarded this land throughout the generation and pay respects to their elders, past and present. We welcome the duty and opportunity to share stewardship of these lands.
Thank you. Next, we have the approval of the agenda. Does anyone have any changes to the agenda as written?
No.
Okay, then by acclamation, we will accept the agenda as presented. Board President's Report. I'd like to talk a little bit today about civility. There's a poster that we have behind us, and it's a poster that was developed by the civility group in Oshkosh, the civility project group in Oshkosh. And it's something that we had bye-bye at the Oshkosh Area School District, and at the last meeting, we had some flare-ups during the public comment portion, and that will not happen again this evening. While we appreciate your passion for the topics that we are discussing, civility will be at the forefront of this meeting and all future board meetings. Yesterday, I was honored to speak at the district's staff convocation to our returning teachers and staff. There was so much enthusiasm for this upcoming year and the returning students. I spoke to them about how proud I was of their continued use of common sense and the golden rule in the classroom, and the positive impact it makes on the students and on the community. The same holds true for these meetings. We want what is best for our students. As a board, we value the community's opinion and appreciate you taking the time to communicate at a board meeting, or via phone, or email. However, with that being said, your opinion is taken to heart so much more when you are civil and refrain from derogatory or personal attacks. We, as a board, will also be responsible stewards of the golden rule and the Oshkosh civility pledge. We were elected by you and will do our best to represent you when making tough decisions for the Oshkosh Area School District. So during tonight's public comment, because of the anticipated large number of speakers and to ensure safety for all, there have been two changes that have been made to the public comments for this evening. Number one, with the guidelines of Policy 0167.3, public comment at board meetings, it will be limiting people making public comments to those who either reside in the Oshkosh Area School District or have children that go to the district. And for safety purposes, people providing their public comments will need to provide the city they reside in and not their specific address. We have 45 minutes for public comments. After that, we will be done with public comments, and there's a maximum of three minutes per speaker. That means we have 15 speakers for tonight's meeting. Thank you very much in advance for being here and for your comments. We appreciate them. Superintendent's Report.
All right, so we'll start with the good news that we're back. So last week was an amazing week for our educators and staff, returning for an exciting new school year. Since then, we've been busy diving into our professional development sessions, training sessions, building and department meetings, and classroom preparation. And as you can see from a lack of parking tonight, we also have back-to-school family engagement nights, and so much more going on in our schools. So really excited to be able to celebrate our staff and all of work that they've done over the summer to prepare for a successful school year, and can't wait to welcome back students next Tuesday. We also have, last month, middle schoolers from across the district gathered together for a week-long band camp. Band camp included individual, small group, and large group instruction with a lot of fun activities. Students met every morning at Vell Phillips Middle School to learn music and practice before performing at a concert at the end of the week. With the start of school just days away, we want to remind our community to look out for our school buses. Today and tomorrow, Cobuson Buses will also be doing their practice runs. This is a great opportunity for families to go out and meet their bus drivers. We also want to remind our students and families that we are continuing to provide free city bus rides through the partnership with the City of Oshkosh. Middle and high school students will need the new Wisco Student Bus Pass, and details have been shared with families, and they can learn more in their school offices if they're interested. Our 2024-2025 Project Search interns recently gathered for a day of fun for their program's annual summer picnic. We look forward to working with this great group of young adults. Project Search is a work-based program housed at Ascension Mercy Hospital. The goal of the program is for students to find and obtain meaningful employment within their communities. So great to welcome our new class for that program. Yesterday was also an incredible day for our staff as we kicked off our annual convocation, featuring a hometown hero and NBA star Tyrese Halliburton. The Oshkosh North grad joined me for an inspiring Q&amp;A, sharing his journey and deep appreciation for the educators who shaped his life. It's a rare opportunity for our staff to come together and celebrate, in celebration of our community and our purpose, seeing the excitement and pride on every face as Tyrese connected his success to his OASD roots, created an unforgettable atmosphere setting and inspirational tone for the beginning of the year. So we sincerely thank Tyrese and his team for taking time out of their busy schedules to come and share some time with us. Also want to announce that we have a milestone moment coming up. We'll continue to share this reminder and invite our entire community to share, or to join us on September 22nd for a public dedication and open house of our brand-new Menominee Elementary School. This event will feature a brief dedication ceremony and self-guided tours. So we're excited to get staff in there the last couple of weeks and for students to join us both this week in their introductions and next week as they get school kicked off. And the remaining slide is just a list of places that I've been able to, had the good fortune of going over the last couple of weeks, and some activities that I've been engaging in as we're getting ready for the beginning of the school year. Just want to thank everybody for welcoming me and continuing to do the good work of the district as we prepare for the 24-25 school year. So that concludes the superintendent's good news report for tonight.
Thank you very much. Next, we'll have a verbal report from the Board Listening Session, Mrs. Conrad Peters.
All right, good evening. We had two individuals come and speak at the listening session, and we had some very good back-and-forth conversation. Administrative Guideline 2260E, non-discrimination guidelines related to students who are transgender and students non-conforming, was discussed in scenarios when a parent could be informed, not informed. There was a lot of dialogue back and forth about that administrative guideline as well as the policy. Dr. Davis indicated that we would follow up with the individual, and Matt Kemmer did have a follow-up phone call. Matt is the Director of People's Services. We also had expanded discussion on different cases that are coming forward about gender identity, and we discussed concerns over possible litigation in the future and the cost to school districts. So those were a summary of the comments from Listening Session on 8:14.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, the school facilities referendum update. Dr. Davis.
Yeah, great, and I want to have Clint Stelly from Bray Architects join us, along with Jim Fox, our Director of Facilities, and Drew Nihans, our Executive Director of Business Services, and Julie Conrad, our Assistant Superintendent of Operations. So this is the team that I've been working with closely over the last year to be able to shape some of our opportunities coming up for Phase Two in our long-range facilities plan. So I want to be able to share that tonight with the community, with where we're at at this point, and then see if there's any questions from the board. So I'll just work it from right here. So again, just starting with some demographics, these are demographics that are taken from last year, and we'll certainly update those as we get our students in motion as we're moving forward. The couple celebrations as we're moving forward with our facilities planning. One, and this is a really important community celebration, that our reading scores are increasing. So our 3rd through 8th grade scores, based on our I-Ready exams from last year, were up 2.5% from the last year's scores, from 23 to 24, so up 2.5% and then up 5.3% over the last three years. And that's really, can be attributed to the board's support of resources and professional development for our staff, and our staff's really hard work, and students and families coming together to be able to make those efforts. Certainly have a long ways to go yet, and will continue to make those investments as we're moving forward. But that's a big celebration for us as a district and as a community, and we know that those efforts will pay off. Also want to celebrate that on our high school report cards, we have two out of the top three high school report card achievement across our athletic conference. So this is the FVA 2023 results for the high school report cards. You can see Oshkosh North at the top, and Oshkosh West coming in a close third. So we're excited to celebrate because that is really a system celebration as we're moving forward, not just for one level, but a culmination of all the work that we're doing. So I just want to be able to acknowledge that from a community standpoint and celebrate our educators and our students and the hard work that they're doing as we're moving forward. And so with that framework, we also want to make sure that we're, again, focusing in our facilities, and we have a 10-year facilities plan that we have been working off of and continue to cycle through and make progress on that. And that 10-year plan is broken up into four phases, and so you can see the years that are approximately used for working through each phase. Phase One, the completion of Phase One will be concluded with the opening next Tuesday of Menominee Elementary Schools. So that dedication will be the end of Phase One. Again, a tremendous community celebration for the completion of Phase One. That referendum was passed back in 2020. We've been working about for the last year on Phase Two to be able to narrow the scope and get some costing out for Phase Two, so that's a lot of what tonight's conversation will be for west-side consolidation, similar to like we did on the north side, but also some upgrades as far as building conditions, ADA compliance, and then looking at auditorium at North High School. Phase Three and Four are still a ways out for us, and we don't have exact details there, but the scope of those in our long-range planning is looking at a new West High School, and we're looking at that around 2029, so that'll need to be something that we refine as we move forward. And then we also will have to look at an operations referendum, because the operations referendum that was passed in 2020 will expire in 2030. So we'll have to have that baked into part of our work as we're moving forward. We'll have a lot more details on that as we go. And then long-term, looking at improvements at North High School once we would get beyond Phase Three, or Phase, into Phase Four. So just for zooming up to 30,000 feet, that's the map that we're working off of as we get to some of the details that you'll hear tonight. So again, we're going to focus tonight on Phase Two and some of the details that are coming up in Phase Two. It's important that we do this now because we need some community input over the next two or three months, so the board can be in a good position to be able to make a recommendation as we're moving forward. So starting with the why, why would we do facilities consolidation across our district? There's really four things that are driving this. So number one are supporting our growing student needs and making sure that our students are getting the highest services and the most quality services that they need. Two is looking at some aging building conditions, ADA accessibility, and classroom adequacy around size specifically. Three is to address our rightsizing, our declining birth rates, so we have some of that demographic data that you'll see that plays into the consolidation plan really well. And then finally, gaining our operational efficiencies, because we are not a district of 10,000 students anymore, and nothing in our demographics say that we're going to get to that point again. So we want to make sure that we're rightsizing and gaining those operational efficiencies to make sure we can stay competitive with teacher salaries, with our programming that we're doing as we're moving forward. So those efficiencies are going to be really important. So those are the four things that are driving our work. Just to talk a little bit about each one of them, some of the services that we see better able to provide in a consolidated setting is just increased access to full-time staff and mental health services. And so as we have larger schools, we're able to get full-time FTEs into these schools, and that results in less traveling for teachers and just a better environment for kids to be able to concentrate our services for our students inside of those buildings. One of the things that we've also struggled with, and this is across the country, a teacher shortage and not having as big a pools for our teaching positions. It's much more difficult to fill teaching positions that aren't full-time FTEs at one building compared to being at one building specifically. So consolidation allows us to have more FTEs at that 1.0 that would be assigned to one particular building as we move forward. So the next area would be addressing our building conditions. So two of our west-side schools are at least 100 years old, with South Park, I think, an original part of South Park being built in 1904, being 120 years old. So we know buildings that are built in that, along that time, have significant ADA limitations, potential for some building failures related to some old plumbing systems that are still intact, which have us, you know, concerned about things like mold and asbestos that may lead to us needing to get to a virtual emergency, our virtual learning emergency if we needed to, so really trying to be proactive on that and avoid that setting. And then also knowing that our classroom sizes in some of our older buildings are approximately 180 square feet smaller than the recommended class sizes that are contemporary that we're building in some of our new schools. So those are some areas just around the building condition that we want to be able to highlight. I'd mentioned birth rates before, again, declining birth rates. You can see what our enrollment was from 2017, 2018, to what it was last year in 2023, 2024. We have just completed, working with UW-Madison, a population lab projection, looking at where we are over the next five years, and the projection is that we'll continue to reduce about 100 students across the entire system per year for the next five years. So the trend of us declining enrollment is not going to change. A lot of that is due to birth rates and just the regional demographics that we're in. And again, that's not necessarily unique to Oshkosh and Wisconsin. 71% of the public schools in Wisconsin are facing declining enrollment. So this is really a larger demographic phenomenon that's going on. These are just a couple graphs, one from the study that I'd mentioned from UW-Madison on the left-hand side that shows Oshkosh birth rates from, basically, I think about a 10-year, 10-15-year period of time through 2022. And then the right-hand side is just looking at Wisconsin in general. So you can see that although we thought, and maybe we're hoping, that when people are home from COVID, there's going to be a lot of babies born, we haven't necessarily seen that large spike. There has been a little bit of a spike, but not enough to keep up with where we were before. So these are really important demographics for us, knowing that as we want to be able to right-size our building facilities and our services, we want to make sure that it's for the future and the students that we're going to serve, and not for the students that we have served or generations that we've served in the past. And that's a lot of what this plan is built around. So we believe that in that path is moving us from where we were prior to our four-phase plan at 20 schools down to 15 schools as we're moving forward, and this Phase Two would get us down to 15 schools. That will gain some operational efficiencies that are really significant for us. So as we would take a look at just Phase One and some operational estimates on our operational efficiencies, we have over half a million dollars from Vell Phillips, and we're projecting about 1.3, little over 1.3 million dollars in annual operating savings coming from Menominee Elementary School. So you can combine those savings together on some annual savings that we would have. In that, I also want to make sure that it's understood that nobody lost a job in those positions, like those were addressed through attrition, through retirements, and people were having the opportunity to be placed somewhere else in the district. So that's an important caveat. It also reduces our staff travel and then equipment and contracted services by just having, moving down to 15 schools versus 20 schools that we had historically. So just a quick breakdown, and again, this is available to the public, I don't want to go into great detail on this, but this is just some areas of where those savings are coming from. And again, those would be annual savings for us of over half a million dollars from the Vell Phillips consolidation. And then the second, next slide then would show the over 1.3 million dollars in annual savings that we're projecting through Menominee, again, through reductions from a classroom and professional staff aspect of it. And again, everybody was able to be relocated. What we can't necessarily capture now is what the operational, either increases or decreases would be to running the new building, because we haven't obviously run the new building for an entire year. So we'll be coming up with those, so there'll be some nuances to that. There's about a $50,000 to $60,000 increase in operations for Vell Phillips that we baked in the previous slide, so we'll be monitoring that as we go throughout the year. But we believe that it's going to be certainly well over a million-dollar savings as we look at Menominee Elementary Schools. So that's money, again, that will be important for us operationally as we move forward. So that's the why. So I guess I'll maybe stop there and ask the board if there's any questions around the why we would be looking at that consolidation, and then we can go into a little bit more of the what, what we're specifically looking at. Any questions? Okay. So specifically looking at the scope of the west-side consolidation, we would be looking at middle school, elementary school, and then some opportunities for us from the co-curricular side. So from a middle school standpoint, we would look at a either replacement or significant renovation at the South Park Middle School site, and then looking at taking the students that would be at Perry Tippler, dispersing them on the west side to either Trager Middle School or South Park Middle School, and having Perry Tippler Middle School, in its current sense, repurposed to be able to house some of our alternative school sites, which are currently not in schools, along with our recreation department offices, which are currently not in schools. So that allows us to be able to have an opportunity to sell our current rec building and also bring our resources for that programming closer into school settings, which we think would be more appropriate. West Side Elementary consolidation, so one is to be able to close the C and sell Roosevelt Elementary and do an expansion then at Oakwood, Trager, and Franklin to be able to get up to our capacity of 600 students at our elementary schools. So that's similar to what we built Menominee Elementary for. So that allows us to have four grades, our four classrooms at each grade level, which we would call four tracks, that we believe provides us with some optimal opportunities for professional development among staff, groupings with students, and programming as we're moving forward. So that's what our target is as we move forward with our elementary schools. Our Roosevelt students would be dispersed amongst the schools based on our school boundaries. We're going to look at converting our Shapiro STEM Academy, the current elementary school, into the OASD pre-kindergarten center. So we currently do not have a pre-kindergarten center. We have our pre-kindergarten programming at a variety of community sites, so we'd like to be able to bring that under one roof. One, to be able to really consolidate our staffing, to be able to consolidate our resources and services that we can provide for our youngest learners. We know how important that pre-kindergarten experience is for kids to be able to be successful in our literacy scores moving forward, so to bring them under one roof is going to be important. So that's a conversion that we're proposing will happen either way, whether the referendum passes or not, because we do have enough room at our elementary schools on the west side to be able to disperse the kids at Shapiro as we move forward. So we'll talk about that as we would, again, progress down our community sessions as we're moving. And then finally, to eliminate leases at our non-district locations for pre-K and then our alternative schools, so that'll result in some savings for us also. And then on the co-curricular side, we'd look at some recommendation, or one recommendation from our Facility Advisory Committee 2.0, which looked at co-curricular facilities, looking at building an auditorium at North High School. So they would have their own auditorium on the north side to be able to support the programming that occurs, so their facility is greatly in need of a performing arts and music space to be able to perform. And then, as I mentioned earlier, in the conversion of Tippler, bringing the rec department into Tippler, then we would also sell the recreation center building, which is downtown right now. So that's the 30,000-foot level of what we would be looking at from a scope standpoint with this referendum. So I just want to walk through just graphically quickly. So as we'd be looking at the elementary schools, we'd be moving from five elementary schools down to four, again, with the Shapiro site being one of those four as a pre-K center, with Roosevelt coming offline. We have some, a different level of remodeling depending on how the buildings lay out. So as we mentioned, we're going to be expanding Trager Elementary School, which is an addition of four classrooms, so that fits actually pretty nicely and symmetrically on that current site out at Trager. Franklin Elementary would be a significant additions and renovations to that building, and so you can see on there how that fits in their site plan along with some of the details. And again, all of this is available in our public documents if you want to look at some of those details as we move forward. But that includes some additions, some light renovation, and some heavy renovation. Some of our priorities in this is to make sure that as we add additions to our buildings, we also modernize our current spaces, so we don't have a 1980s version of school and a 2000 version of school and a 2020s version of school, that we have some continuity across the entire school. So that's the need for the heavy renovations as we're moving forward. So Oakwood Elementary would be similar renovations to Franklin. Obviously, the campus is a little bit different, but some light to heavy renovations along with an addition to get them up to 600 students. And then when we look at Shapiro, we would look at just heavy renovation, light and heavy renovation at that site, so no need for an expansion with our current pre-K structure, but some significant changes in that building to make that really specialized for our three- and four-year-olds. So we know that would be the best way to be able to create a learning environment that'll be beneficial for them at Shapiro. North High School will be an addition of the auditorium, so that'll come, as you can see on the site plan, a little bit into the current parking lot, across the sidewalk and current parking lot. And then there'll also be some heavy renovation to some of the art rooms in the current Hooper Auditorium. That's a small, more of a lecture hall, significant renovations for that space to become a smaller black box theater, if you will, along with some renovations for our art rooms. So really an enhancement to our music and art spaces over at North High School as part of this program. So specifically thinking about the structures of our middle schools, again, going from three middle schools down to two middle schools, both at the, middle school will be at the Trager site then, and then at the South Park site. So whether that's a brand-new building or that's renovation, that's something that we want to be able to get some feedback from the community on. But we're looking at, again, the consolidation from three buildings to two buildings as we're moving forward. Going back to some of the reasons specifically, getting specific about the South Park site and some of the issues that we have at the South Park site. So again, there's parts of that original building that are 120 years old that have galvanized piping. That piping is packed into walls that are, that's packed into asbestos, and it has a history for us of leaking, and it's very difficult to get to. So if we start to get into situations where we have leaky pipes, what we're really concerned about is some air quality concerns that we already experienced somewhat in the basement, but looking at, you know, the possibility, and we don't have mold or asbestos issues right now, but trying to be proactive with this, so we don't get into an emergency situation. Because what we know is that if we do have an emergency that involves this type of infrastructure, that's not a one- or two-day turnaround. That's a significant project that we would have to address. That's going to force us into a virtual learning setting for the South Park students, because we could not accommodate at Tippler and Trager, we couldn't accommodate those students in a short turnaround. So we want to be able to stay out of virtual learning as much as we can in that emergency setting and be able to be proactive in that space as we're moving forward. And certainly with the building that was built in the era that South Park was built, ADA accessibility continues to be a big difficulty for us at South Park. So that's some of the why when we're looking at specifically the South Park site. We're also looking at some just core academic areas and just the sizes of classrooms, and so you can see, you know, we're about 180 square feet on average, smaller than what we would currently be building, for example, at Vell Phillips as a peer. And you can see some of the just programming things that we do within special education really need that sufficient size. So part of the new South Park or a significant renovation to South Park would provide those types of spaces as we move forward. Just a couple of examples, on the left, you can see an example from South Park, one of their classrooms, what that would look like, and then on the right, what that would look like at Vell Phillips and one of our new rooms, so you can see the compare and contrast there. And again, just some of the reality that we are currently working through, so these are contemporary pictures at South Park. So these are contemporary pictures at South Park. So on the left, you can see the gymnasium. So just some significant kind of safety, ADA accessibility issues in navigating the bleachers at South Park. First floor, and you can see just some of the consequences of some of the humidity that occurred just on some bubbling of the wall. That's one of the offices on the first floor. And then certainly the lower level is our place where we have the most humidity and just continuing to see some of the deterioration of that building as we move forward. So just want to provide some of those as examples. Now, I will say that our custodial staff, Jim's leadership and our custodial staff at South Park keeps that place up and running on a regular basis. And so I want to congratulate them and thank them for all of their work. So when you go to South Park, you'll see shiny floors and you'll see spaces that are clean. But it's the infrastructure that we're concerned about and not to get us into an emergency situation where we would need to move to virtual learning. We want to be able to stay out of that at all costs. So what, one of the options would be for us is taking a look at a new middle school on that site. So it'd be a teardown of the current South Park and then a rebuild, so a building of a new middle school on the South Park site. So that's an idea of what that would look like. Again, we'd get into a lot more details if this is the direction that we're going to go, but that would just be an idea of how that would sit on that site as we move forward. So that gives you, gives you an idea of, again, the scope of some of the new plans that we would look at as part of Phase Two, the benefits and the consolidation, and then what the reality of that would be as we move forward. Now, the plans are great, but at the end of the day, like, what is this going to cost us, right? And so as we would move forward, and these are just initial project costs, again, we'd have to drill down on these a little bit more, but these are good estimates for us as we move forward. You can see the different levels just based on the renovations and additions that are needed at those levels. So the estimate for Phase Two at this scope would be $195 million. The good news for us here in Oshkosh is that that, and that would need to be approved by voters. The good news is that by us prepaying previous debt on projects, and the board's vision on that over the last two to three years, we'd be able to pass a $195 million referendum and not have an increase to the school levy due to paying those previous projects off. So that would be a $0 increase to the school levy even if that $195 was passed. So essentially, this year to next year, there would not be an increase, and we would be able to reap the benefits and the values of what that $195 million would provide for us. So again, want to thank the board for putting us in a position to be able to do that, offer that to the community. And again, we'll be taking community feedback as we go throughout the upcoming months. But to me, this is probably the most important slide for us to be able to really understand what the viability of this, these projects are as we're moving forward. So we've also talked at a board level, looking at especially our recent committee work on what would renovations look like and expansions. So this would be an opportunity for us and one of the options to explore some heavy renovation in the current site and the addition onto the current South Park site. So this would keep South Park standing as it is right now and have some additions and some heavy renovations. Now, this isn't going to take care of 100% of the infrastructure issues that we have with some of the plumbing and some of the piping, because you're never going to be able to get to all of that necessarily, but it's going to make a significant impact for us as we move forward. So we want to be able to have a couple of options because South Park is the biggest dollar number on these projects and just want to be able to also have something that's going to meet our needs and not have some solution or not have some options that really aren't going to be solutions for us realistically moving forward. So whether it's a new school or the significant renovation and expansion would be two legitimate options that would help us as we move forward. You can see what approximately what that footprint would be, and we just put some bullet points underneath there. You can see the options for the renovation and expansion estimate comes in a little bit lower than the new building, so at $82 million, still a significant investment because of the big-time renovation that you would need at South Park in order to resolve a lot of the issues that we have. So we want to be able to go to the community over the next couple of months and be able to get feedback on which one of these options we think is the most viable to move forward with and then be able to work that into our financing as we go. So again, just an overview of where we'd get some consolidation savings, both the sale of buildings, including Roosevelt Elementary and Oshkosh Rec Department, ending of leases at the 4K sites and our alternative schools, and then consolidation of staff with at Tippler, Roosevelt, and Shapiro. And again, we would continue to commit to making sure that our staff had places to go. Essentially, our staff will follow the students. So as we would move forward, we'd make sure that that placement occurs, you know, within their certifications and be able to move from there. So a similar process that we just completed successfully on the North Side. So again, a timeline, and again, this is an idea across the system. And the punchline of this slide is moving from 20 schools in 2020 to what we believe is optimal for the Oshkosh area school district moving forward with the students that will be serving into the future at 15 schools with high-quality services by the time we would get to 2029. So a lot of details to be worked through in the timing of when the renovations happen, but that's kind of an overview of what that scale would look like. And that puts us in very good position then to be, continue to be competitive in our programming and to be able to maintain our responsibility to taxpayers as we be moving forward into the future. Sets it up very nicely for future boards and future generations of students and families in Oshkosh. So one of the questions that's come up that I wanted to address right away is what if Phase Two isn't completed? So again, one, we would continue to be at risk of virtual learning if South Park emergency came due to some, the insufficient room that we'd have for our South Park students at Trager and Tippler, that we would, just would not be able to turn them around and put them in a school right away that next day if we get into that renovation. Now, we're not at that point now. We hope we don't get to that point, but when you're working with 120-year-old building that has a history of leaks, we think being proactive right now is a good time to be able to address that. Loss of services for students, and that's really thinking about, you know, the access to counselors. When we have counselors that are split between buildings, we have students that don't necessarily have access to counselors when they need them. Some counselors would be split between, you know, a morning in one school and an afternoon in another school. And I will tell you, we don't know when students will need counselors at any given day. And so we need to make sure that we have that coverage all day. This process would be very, we would have to continue to be in these split positions if we don't move forward with Phase Two and approve Phase Two. Shapiro will again continue, will still close either way and become a pre-K site, and we would work through what the renovations of that project would be. Certainly, they wouldn't be anywhere close to what we have in Phase Two, but we would have to, you know, commit some level of money to be able to make sure that that is created into be that pre-K site. Certainly, we would not be able to take advantage of the cost of annual operations, the decrease that we would receive, so it would be an operations increase without consolidation. And then construction costs will continue to increase. So essentially, if you want to do these projects, but we want to wait five years to do them because we don't think now's the right time, we can put, you know, inflationary costs into those numbers as we would move throughout the next five years. And also knowing that these projects don't get done, you know, these are five-year projects as you would look at the timing of each one of these. So you can not only add five years of inflation onto these projects, but you can probably add 10 years on because by the time you get to those projects being done. So that's just some of the implications if Phase Two wasn't passed right now. So just to give you an idea of the timeline for us moving forward as a board and as an executive team, again, we've been planning since January to get some defined costs associated to Phase Two. Done a presentation to the board at our Facilities and Finance meeting previously and also tonight's presentation. Community feedback sessions, and I've got a slide to give everybody the dates of what, where those are and when those are. We want to do those in September, October, because ultimately, it's going to decide, the voters of Oshkosh are going to decide whether this plan is a good plan to move forward. And we want to make sure that we're refining a plan that's going to win in Oshkosh. So that's really important for everybody in Oshkosh to be able to give some input into what they think about this current plan, because this is a draft, and we want to make sure that we can get that feedback over the next couple of months. We'll bring that feedback then from the community sessions back to the school board in November to be able to refine the plan that you see tonight. There'll likely be some changes to that based on community feedback. And then the board will need to decide in December and no later than January 21st of whether or not you'd want to go to referendum, because by state statute, you need, I believe, a 75 days prior to the vote. So April 1st would be when the community vote would be for Phase Two on the ballot. So that's just an idea of what the timeline would be. So again, a lot of conversations that need to be had, but wanted to be able to lay that out for the community and for the board tonight. So our next steps, and this is very important, so if you're with us and you want to take a picture of these sites, or picture of this slide, this is really important for us, we'll continue to get this out on our social media, Oshkosh Herald, Northwestern, anywhere that wants to publish these states, because it's really important for us to be able to get as many people as possible to get feedback. So we'll have different days. They're all going to begin at 6:30, different days of the week throughout September and October to be able to give us feedback. And we'll also offer, our emails are out there, so if anybody has questions and they want to just email us some feedback, that's also fine. You can email me, and I'll make sure that it's incorporated as part of this feedback. And certainly, we'll have phone calls and can meet anybody anywhere to be able to talk about these as we're moving forward. And that is my contact information if you'd like to do so. So with that, I'll take any questions or dialogue with the board based on just our presentation tonight. And again, there'll be a lot of community engagement as we're moving forward. In addition to those community sessions, I want to also be clear, we'll also be doing a lot of small group sessions with service clubs and different organizations. So if anybody's out there that has, that wants their organization and a presentation to their organization on these, on the facilities projects, please contact me, and we'd love to be able to, over the next couple of months, be in contact with your group and come to do the presentations.
I only have one question. You mentioned that they can find this on the district website. What do they go to when you get to the district website?
So it's district, I don't have the slashes necessarily exactly with me now. I don't know if we can-
Dr. Brown will find that for us.
If we pull that up.
Facilities tab.
I'm sorry?
There's a facilities tab from the homepage.
Okay.
Perfect.
So facilities tab from our homepage and go right to the referendum box.
Good. That's great. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Very exciting.
I have some questions.
Yeah.
I have a couple of questions. One of the reasons I joined the board is because I'm passionate about facilities planning. And we were on vacation when my son was starting kindergarten, when they closed Green Meadow. And they had six weeks to prepare a Plan B for all the students to integrate into other schools into, from Green Meadow. And it took seven years before we actually figured out a home space for those kids. And that is the reason I joined the board, because I don't want to see us in another situation where a school closes six weeks before the school starts. And I know we will not be in that position because we have this facilities planning, which I'm very excited about our next phase. So I just want to go on record and clarify that, are we saying if we go to referendum, it will be zero impact to the taxpayer?
It'll be, yeah, it'll be a $0 increase-
Zero.
-in tax levy based on the prepayment of previous projects.
Because we-
So we're retiring debt-
Right.
And then being able to bring that debt-
And we have, do we have a number for how much cost savings we've realized as a result of our facilities plan? And my second follow-up question to that is, how much are we going to save when we do Phase Two if we know? We know it's going to be a lot, but-
Yeah, so I've shown on some previous slides, and I can go back to, go back to that.
$1.4 million.
Yeah. So-
There it is.
Yeah, so it'd be those two numbers combined. So those are annual savings.
So far, yes.
So far, yeah.
And it continues to go up because of this plan?
Well, yeah, so those will be annual, those'll be annual savings for us. So just shy of $2 million. And we're not sure what the projection, I mean, we can guesstimate what it would be for Phase Two just based on those numbers, but we'll have to see. And again, we'll have to operate Menominee for a full year to see-
To see.
You know, there'll be some, because that's air-conditioned and will be used more, likely a little bit more to operate that building. But again, that was three buildings going into one, so there's a lot of moving parts to that.
Right, yeah.
But, yeah, but, you know, with confidence, we can say that those are the numbers that we'll be able to realize some annual savings on right now, and we would look forward to similar numbers as we move forward.
It's exciting. Thank you so much. I think that this is going to be fantastic for our community, and the fact it costs taxpayers $0 is really good news, too.
Just a quick aside, we've lived through closings of two schools that I recall that had significant mold problems. One was Green Meadow, and you cited the quick turnaround in doing that. Another one we had was the old Sunset School.
Oh, right.
On a Friday, I believe, the then superintendent noted that it was not safe for students and staff, and they needed to be relocated by the following Monday, which the district was able to do and reopened on Tuesday. But it was not an ideal situation for students and staff or for the community, but we managed to survive that. But it's not convenient. Both of those were at a time where we did not have online learning, and so there was no option other than to get those kids back into school. But with South Park, and we've learned from that experience, that online learning is not ideal for children, and there are lots of implications for social and emotional learning as well as academic learning. And so this to me makes sense to avoid that kind of situation.
Thank you.
Let's have a couple of comments. I would encourage the community to be involved in these presentations and listening sessions because as a board and as a district and as a community, we want as much community input as possible, or I do at least, and for the community to be as educated as possible on what this decision is. Because it's a huge decision for the community, for kids, you know, and ultimately, the community's going to make this decision, right? We can put forward a referendum, which I hope we do with as much input as possible, but the community will vote on these types of things and decide. So I hear from so many people after Phase One was voted through, like, I didn't know that was going to happen, or I didn't know that was in there. You know what I mean? And it was, right? So as a community, we have, each one of us has a responsibility to get educated and to provide input through this decision-making process so that we can try to get it right. So that's my thoughts.
Thank you.
I'm curious, we have two beautiful new buildings that are online now in the district, but the whole process was not without some hiccups, I would say, for students and staff involved in those consolidations. What has the district learned from implementing Phase One? And I'm particularly curious, and how you do things differently in Phase Two, but I'm particularly curious about the impact and the logistics of merging those schools and serving the kids who are in those schools throughout the merge and the staff, and then making sure that the new schools, or whatever you want to call it, expanded schools, get off on the right track and, you know, don't have to do any do-overs or things like that.
Yeah, yeah. I think that's a really good question. So certainly, you know, in Phase One, we had Vell Phillips first and then Menominee second as part of the consolidation examples. So a couple of things I think to lift up and that were lessons learned that we did a better job in collectively from a district standpoint. So one, for Menominee, we were able to keep principals on-site throughout, all the way up until the end, until those schools were closed. So for Vell Phillips, we did not have that. We had a shared principal, and she did as good of a job as anybody could do, worked hard, did her best to be able to bring those staffs together, but was really just a very difficult task. And so in seeing that and learning from that, so looking at Merrill Elementary, Webster Elementary, and Washington Elementary, able to keep principals like at those sites. So I think the support for students and staff, like, through that consolidation process really made a difference for us as we're moving forward. And to that end, also, I think the second piece is just looking at the just more deliberate collaboration between those staffs and professional development and really having a couple-year runway to acknowledge when those closings are going to happen, who the principal is of that building, and to be able to make sure that staff have an opportunity for professional development, which builds relationships, also some culture building and some expectations because we know that every school handles things a little bit different. Certainly, we have district guidelines, but every school has their own culture, right? And so like, as you would merge, that's part of the difficulty. So really being, we were deliberate more so at Menominee to make sure that those staffs were able to collaborate on a regular basis. And that has led to feedback that I've received that's been just a smoother transition for those two. So I would say those are probably the top two lessons, you know, from my standpoint and thinking about the transition with Vell and the transition with Menominee. And again, transition is a little bit different, so it'd be nuanced, but those are some things certainly that we can bring forward in this process.
I'd also encourage deliberate, I don't know, interaction or that feels authentic with, for the students, too.
Sure.
I think a lot of the kids that, I'm speaking as a parent of a child who was in that consolidation at the middle school, they felt very much left behind and forgotten.
Sure.
And I think it's very important that they know that there's, their education is reliable to throughout the process.
Yeah, absolutely. I appreciate that.
I forgot my question, actually, about property values. Have we done the- Have we done any research on how the property values have increased in the neighborhoods that have new schools? Because I think that that might be something that's helpful to sell it in the community. You're going to get a new school in your neighborhood, your property values are going to go up. Is that, do we have anything on that?
I don't have anything on that right now, but that'd be something that we can look at.
Perfect.
A lot of the, like, realtors, organizations, you know, do some of those assessments. So that's something that we can-
Thank you.
-take a look at throughout the, throughout the fall.
Well, I will say, it's not often that I do this, but a number of years ago, I was part of a research effort that actually published a study that suggested that as you close schools, the further you are away from a school, you actually decline in property value. Or so the closer that you are, you are going to increase. So I acknowledge, well, I don't know that I would acknowledge that building a new school is necessarily going to increase property values, but I assure you, closing schools is going to reduce some property values. Now, I will suggest that I'm probably not as excited about this plan as other members on this board. But I do firmly believe that anything like this, if there is an opportunity to go and ask the public this question, I absolutely want to ask them that. So I agree with what Chris said, that I hope everybody in this community goes out as much as possible and learns what it is that we're proposing, so you're educated when you go to vote.
Absolutely.
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you very much. Great discussion.
Thank you.
Well done. Education Committee report.
Hey, that's me.
All right.
Education Committee met on Thursday, August 1st at 7:30 a.m. We had three items that we talked about. First, we're excited about the fact that we are, and especially Molly is excited by the fact that we are field testing the CKLA, or CKLA, and that that will be in at least two grade levels in every building, K through five. And Lakeside Elementary is going to be in the entire school. We had a bunch of professional development scheduled for August, so I'm assuming that went exceptionally well, right, Dr. Coleman? Perfect. And we're going to have CKLA consultants, schedules will be in the classrooms to help meet with principals and literacy coaches regularly. So this is an item we're going to keep track of every month and continue to talk about. So, second item, we had an update on the early literacy screener. That was part of the Act 20 stuff that was happening. And we have selected the Ames Web Plus as our early literacy screener. And luckily, the iReady became the diagnostic tool that was on the state's list. So we're happy about that because that's a tool that we already use and we're familiar with. So, good stuff there. The third element that we talked about was block scheduling. We discussed the concept of the three whys, the top three whys that we talked about. We're expanding course offerings and allowing kids to sample and be ready for capstone experiences. Expanding youth apprenticeships and partnering with UWO and Fox Valley Technical College. And minimizing transitions. We did talk about a few cons, but we don't need to explore that today. What we want to do, though, is have developed a frequently asked questions to make sure that the community and everybody, all the staff, have an understanding of why we might want to propose this. Our current plan is to bring this to a board for vote in December then. So that is my report. We will have a next meeting, September 5th at 7:30 a.m.
Look forward to it. Thank you very much for your report. Facilities and Finance.
Thank you, Mrs. Wyman. The Facilities and Finance Committee met on Thursday, August 8th, 2024, with five agenda items. The first was the draft of the Phase Two Long Range Facilities Plan, which we saw an update on tonight. The district is currently in Phase Two of a fourth phase plan, which was approved by the Board of Education in 2020. We also talked about School Resource Officer Annual Report. The committee reviewed annual reports provided by the Oshkosh Police Department for three years, 2021 to 2, 22 to 3, and 23 to 4. Approval of Technology RFPs was a third agenda item. Mr. Schmidt noted that the current server has reached the end of its lifespan. The replacement had been planned for, however due to cost, it will come before the board for approval at the August board meeting because of the size of the expenditure. Number four, an update on the Merrill School deconstruction. Deconstruction continues to move forward with the scheduled date of August 19th for the start of pre-deconstruction and asbestos abatement. The issuance of the permit for formal deconstruction has been delayed while the site is being evaluated. And lastly, we talked about a request for, a proposal process for realtors and legal counsel. That meet, that topic was moved to the September 12th, 2024, meeting due to a running out of time. So the future meeting date is September 12th at 7:30 a.m. Thank you.
Thank you. Legislative Committee.
Thank you, Ms. Wyman. I'll keep this brief because I'm going to take a wild guess that everyone's not here to hear my legislative report. But, congratulations to our superintendent, Brian Davis. He was elected to the AASA Governing Board for two years. He joins a delegation of Wisconsin superintendents and superintendents from across the nation to advocate for public education support at the national level. Congratulations to him on, on that. Also, we were given some election updates where we just received some information about the primary elections, just because the job of the Legislative Committee is to interact with our legislatures so that we can advocate for students in Oshkosh through, through that committee. So that's it. And our, oh, our next meeting will be September 24th, obviously of this year. So, thank you much.
Thank you, Mr. Wright. Policy and Governance.
Thank you, Mrs. Wyman. Policy and Governments, or Governance met yesterday. Seems like it was longer ago than that, but it was yesterday. We first talked about the consolidation of professional and support staff human resources policies. Basically, all we're doing there is consolidating some of our redundant policies. We also looked at the grievance procedure for professional staff and support staff. And the committee approved moving the grievance timeline from five days to 10 days in both the policy and the handbook. And the takeaway from that was we want to make sure that we are listening to our staff, and this is something that the staff brought to us regarding the handbook, and we are going to change it back to 10 days. The next part of our meeting talked about Title IX. The policy returned to the committee for further discussion and process determination after recent updates were received in relation to current litigation going through the court system, as well as a legal recommendation from the school district's attorney. The legal injunction currently affects three schools, not the entire school district. Superintendent Davis discussed concerns with the committee about not being in compliance with the federal law and its effects. The committee discussed their individual concerns with new language, and we will be, it will come back to the board for a vote on our September 11th meeting. That took up the majority of our time. We next discussed eight other policies that I'm not going to go over in detail, given the fact that, again, we know a lot of you are not here for, to hear about policy. Let's see. These policies that we went over regarding employee leaves, public requests and complaints will be coming to the full board for a vote on our September 11th meeting as well. We have proposed, and for our future agenda items, we're going to look at the process of having public comments at board meetings. And our next meeting is September 24th. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And now we will move into the public forum part of the meeting. Total 45 minutes during the meeting will be allowed for public comments. Each speaker will be allowed up to three minutes to speak. Public comments will be limited to those who reside in Oshkosh area school district or have children attending the district. For safety purposes, people providing their public comments will need to state the city they reside in, but not the specific address. Please remember that the use of specific names of district personnel, titles, or identifiable descriptions may lead to legal liability. In such instances, please pursue the district's formal complaint process by contacting the superintendent's office to direct you to the appropriate administrator. And please remember all of the civility that we talked about earlier in the, in the meeting. Okay. First, we will have non-agenda, and our first speaker is TJ Hobbs.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I was not expecting non-agenda first, forgive me, but I have not seen the floor, so I can make my statement. My name is TJ Hobbs. My pronouns are they/them. I live in Oshkosh, and I'm a co-founder and a board member of Hope Fringe and Oshkosh Pride. I know that LGBTQ+ youth, including trans kids, need our vocal, ongoing support and administrative protection from bullying and harassment in our public schools. Because I was an LGBTQ+ youth, and I was a trans kid in a public school, and I barely survived without that support. We know who we are. We're not a fad. We have always been here, and we will always be here. We have a responsibility at OSAD to respect the gender identity of every school in our district according to District Policy 2260 and 2266, which state in part, quote, "The board does not discriminate on the basis of sexual orientation, sex including gender status, including change of sex, including gender identity, in any of its student programs and activities." When someone tells you what their name is, you call them that. When someone tells you what their pronouns are, that's how you refer to them with respect. When someone tells you what their gender is, that's how you know what their gender is. The Olympic boxer, Imean Khalif, recently reminded the world that we cannot tell someone's gender by looking at them. The only person who knows what gender someone is, is the person themselves. You do not have to understand trans people to respect them and protect them. This is America, and our taxpayer-funded public schools have an ethical and a legal obligation to respect and protect all kids, including trans kids who are more likely to experience harassment and bullying at school than any other students. Treating trans and non-binary students differently because of their gender violates the law as ruled by the Seventh Circuit Court of Appeals in Whittaker versus Kenosha case. In this case, the district prohibited a trans boy from using the bathroom that aligned with his gender. The district ultimately owed him $800,000 after it was determined that they had violated his rights under the old Title IX and the Equal Protection Clause of the Fourteenth Amendment. This ruling still applies to Wisconsin, meaning it is active now and in effect today, regardless of what's happening in Kansas and regardless of what happens with the Title IX amendments. Still, the school board must adopt the Title IX amendments. You have a duty as elected officials to ensure and strengthen anti-discrimination protections for all students and staff, to certify districts' compliance with federal law, and to make responsible financial decisions on behalf of taxpayers. Failure to comply with the Title IX amendments means our district will be forfeiting millions of dollars in school funding, and it will still be illegal and against policy to discriminate against trans and non-binary students at any of our district's schools. Vote yes on Title IX.
And next we have Devon Rothson. Rothson.
I'm going to turn the microphone behind you just to be able to pick it up a little-
Good idea.
Sorry, I was speaking of accessibility things. Of course, my Mac is getting tangled on my hearing aid. Wonderful. I live here in Oshkosh. And I'm here because I want my kids to be safe in school. I want my kids to be safe going to the bathroom. I want my youngest to be empowered to be whoever she wants to be. In other words, I'm here to speak in favor of the Title IX protections. Bullying is a massive problem in our schools, full stop. For trans kids, it's even worse. Roughly one in five trans kids attempt suicide. Trans kids of color have rates going even higher. My own oldest child was bullied to the point of dropping out after he turned 18 his senior year from an Oshkosh high school for his gender. He was bullied in the bathrooms. He was bullied in the hallways. He was bullied in the classrooms. He did not have the support he needed. And there's only so much that I can do as a parent from home. There's so many statistics that show that the rates of mental illness and those struggles in trans youth are horrifically high. But there's also, those same studies show that having a supportive school district, having supportive adults in their lives can help so much. So we can help these kids. We can help support them. We can help them feel safe. We can help them graduate and keep going. Vote yes for Title IX.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Mary Manchester.
My name's Mary. My pronouns are she/her, and I live in Oshkosh. Today, I want to speak from heart about a topic that deeply affects my family and countless others, the new Title IX protections and why they matter so much to me as a member and supporter of the queer community and as a parent of a non-binary child. For my child and so many like them, these new protections are a lifeline. LGBTQ students can often navigate a world that does not always understand or accept their identity. Historically, many schools struggle to provide adequate support, leading to environments where these students face increased risks of discrimination, bullying, or exclusion. The updated regulations offer a broader definition of gender identity, explicitly including non-binary and transgender individuals. This is significant because it acknowledges the diverse spectrum of gender identities and aims to protect all students from harassment and discrimination based on their gender identity or expression. For these kids, this means that their identity is not only recognized, but also respected within their educational system. There are some people at this meeting tonight who'll try to refocus this conversation on non-issues like men in the little girls' room or co-ed locker rooms. I encourage you to see these claims for what they are: ignorant, bigoted, fear-mongering. Members of our community who spoke at the most recent school board meeting on the importance of upholding these new protections have faced harassment, doxing, and death threats. This is inexcusable and disgusting. What saddens me most is to see this type of vitriol coming from parents. If the hateful backlash from these parents is any indication of what their children are being taught about how to treat their peers, we need to act now to come into compliance with the new Title IX regulations, which would at least ensure that similar incidents in schools are addressed promptly and fairly. For me, knowing that there would be new established protocols and resources available to address any issues LGBTQ+ kids could face would bring immense peace of mind. The upgrade to Title IX represents a significant step forward in creating a more equitable and supportive educational landscape. They help ensure that my child and all LGBTQ+ students can learn and thrive in an environment where their identity is acknowledged and respected. This is not just about compliance. It's about compassion, respect, and fairness. As a parent, I'm deeply disappointed and frankly, somewhat scared by the statements of some of the members of this community. But I'm also hopeful for these advancements in Title IX protections. They affirm that our educational institutions are evolving to become more inclusive, providing a safer space for all students to express who they are and to succeed. I urge you to uphold the new Title IX regulations to ensure that all students are guaranteed a safe, inclusive, and equitable educational environment. Thank you.
Thank you. And our next speaker is Rev. Mimi Maki. Am I saying that?
Reverend.
Reverend, I'm sorry. Reverend, I'm sorry.
My name is Reverend Mimi Mackey. I'm an ordained clergy serving at the Emmaus Ecumenical
Where she didn't say where she lived.
Oh, I'm sorry. I live in Oshkosh. Sorry. I'm serving the Emmaus Ecumenical Catholic Community. I'm also a chaplain, working in our community's mental health system. In 2024, the U.S. National Survey on Mental Health of the LGBTQ+ young people found that nearly half, 49% of young people ages 13 through 17, had experienced bullying in the last year. And those reported also reported a higher attempted suicide rate, more than those who had not experienced bullying. From my experience working as a chaplain in the mental health system, I can agree with these statistics. I have yet to meet a transgender youth on my referral list who hasn't experienced not only bullying, but such hatred and trauma that they have resorted to self-harming behaviors, including suicide. Science informs us that gender is not as cut and dry as we once thought. Instead, science tells us it's rather fluid. And who are we to judge how another holds their gender and their identity? All people, especially our children, regardless of their gender identity, are precious and deserve to be treated with dignity and care. All deserve our protection against bullying and other hateful behaviors. All deserve to come to school to be valued and to be safe. I urge the board to support the Title IX revisions. Providing safety for all students harms no one. Providing science and health-based education harms no one. Providing increased protections and awareness against bullying harms no one. Again, I urge the board to support the Title IX revisions. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir?
It wasn't me that said anything, okay?
Sir, this is your warning?
Hold on, hold on.
This is a public school, a public meeting.
Yeah, so don't just take a classroom.
I don't think you're against God.
Okay.
Sir, we'd like you to leave.
He needs to be removed.
How about, how about the lady who put the chef the fuck up? How about her? That seems fair. That seems fair. How about the young lady who put the chef the fuck up? Is that fair? Should we rule her as well?
Sir. Okay.
No, I hear what you're saying, but if somebody else is being a disturbance, so if he's being removed, I think it's only fair that she is as well, or whatever your pronouns are.
That's the end of the disturbances. If we go any further and we will shut this meeting down. Okay? I don't want to. I want to hear from as many people as we possibly can.
Somebody just offered a body part and you guys act like you didn't care. He just asked somebody to eat his you-know-what and nobody said anything at all to him? Nothing? Another chef the F. up? Nobody says anything at all to, to this person? I, I don't lie.
I, I'm sorry. I did not hear that.
Nobody heard anything now. That's ridiculous.
Y'all don't even live in this city. You're a, a hate group.
357 West Timbers.
A hate group.
It's not a hate group. It's from Oshkosh.
Okay. Order, point of order.
10:30 Cumberland, sweetheart. Think again. I have a studio there.
We will be civil or we will ask you to leave. Thank you. Dev Martin.
Hi, Dev Martin. I live in Oshkosh. I support everything that's just been said. I couldn't say it any better. But I would say that all the children in Oshkosh are affected by how trans and LGBTQIA children are affected, whether they're straight or gay or whatever the situation is. When there's hostility, when there's bullying, everyone else feels that tension and that, that need. I know when, I went to school, I'm old, I went to school when Title IX didn't exist at all. We've come a long way in 50-plus years, but we have a ways to go. And, and I, I urge the board to vote yes, to take this, to additional Title IX move. Please vote yes on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Am I pronouncing that correctly? Frone? Frone?
Joyce Frone, Oshkosh, Wisconsin, and thank you for not giving addresses because I've already gotten stupid letters from people from the last time. I'm going to tell you a story about when I was in first grade. I asked my teacher why everyone was making fun of me and she said, "There aren't any black kids, so we picked you as the scapegoat." Yeah, that was a good thing, she said, because every school needs a, every class needs a I don't know why they picked me, probably because I was the smartest kid in the class. But you know why she thought you needed a scapegoat? So that other kids would know what happens if they stepped out of line. Now the scapegoat might be an LGBTQ kid or might be somebody with purple hair. But the practice is still going on of saying, "We need a scapegoat so that all the other kids are scared and won't misbehave, won't be weird." As my teacher told me, "If you weren't so weird, they wouldn't make fun of you." Yeah. So what? I'm going to say something. My daughter's already had the, "Are you sure you're a girl?" bit going into the girls' bathroom, just because she's tall and she's heavy. Let's get rid of that question. Let's get rid of the, "Hey, are you a boy? Are you a girl?" How about we just let them do it? Why do we need scapegoats and questions for kids? Why do we need to keep hurting them? Oh, I forgot, we got to make sure they don't come out weird. Hey, maybe we should start worrying more about them coming out to be bullies than coming out to be weird.
I'm not sure I signed up for the right category. Is this about banning books?
No.
I signed up to the wrong place. I'm sorry.
Okay. All right. Jennifer Kontstein.
My name is Jennifer Kontstein. I live in Oshkosh. I'm also the parent of two children who attend school in Oshkosh, one in middle school and one in high school. And every day when I send them to school, I hope that they're going to be safe. And I know there's a lot of threats out there for my kid and I know there's a lot of threats out there for every kid. But I really, really don't want that threat to ever be about their sex, their gender, their race, or anything else. Every kid in our district deserves to be safe. And I am here to ask you, as everyone did before me, to vote yes on Title IX because all kids should be safe at school. And a lot of times I think we talk about all kids at a level where we think about all kids. And this week I've really been thinking about each kid. Like what does each kid need? And each kid needs something different. And I think in particular, LGBTQ kids, trans kids, they need additional support and they need a district and they need people to say, as we've heard tonight, "I love you, I believe in you, and I want you to be here." And I think voting yes on Title IX sends that message, that we recognize that sometimes it's not safe, that it might not even be safe to come and speak at a school board meeting. And there might be lots of people who want to be here, but they don't feel safe to be here. And there are lots of very brave people who are here. And so I ask you to vote yes on Title IX because it's clear that we need new policy and we need new action because every kid deserves to be safe. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes the non-agenda-related public forum. We'll ask Jean to come back and speak on the agenda-related public forum. I think we can. Be in order.
My name is Jean Erdman and I live in Oshkosh, Wisconsin. I am here to speak against the banning of books in school libraries. I know that anger can be seen as righteous, but people not in your friendship group might see it as taking away other children's freedoms. They may see banning books as not your business for other children, just for your own children. What you decide, your children are going to check out. They may see it as neighbors minding my business. They may see it as neighbors being manipulated by funders from out of state. I oppose book banning at school and public libraries. Even children's authors know. Ah, I lost my page, I'm sorry. What this little children's book says on the page that I cannot find is that libraries have books on all kinds of information. Okay? Even children's books know that, as mainstream as this one looks. There are some books that are being reviewed for, for possible banning. One of them is called Milk and Honey. I read a couple of the others and it was very tedious. I definitely am not the right age for reading this stuff. But there was one called Milk and Honey and as someone who is, who's a poet, and by the way Joyce Who Spoke is one of the finest poets in the state of Wisconsin, Joyce Frone behind me. And I read Milk and Honey and it's, I also write poetry and it's been published and it is a beautiful book. It's free verse and it has great potential for healing children. Okay? I can see that somebody not familiar with or thinking of it in that potential might be a little into thinking, "This is really strange and this is going to confuse kids" or whatever. But you don't get to limit what other people's children have access to in a public school library. That's not your right. I also want to make one more point. The meaning of reading and what things mean in books is cultural. That means it varies from group to group. When I was growing up as a Wisconsin-sinched Lutheran little girl and later Sunday School teacher, meaning to me in school, at, in church and in Sunday School meant you take something out of context and you memorize it so that it goes deep into your heart and soul. And that's what it means. It's as if there's one meaning. But in the culture at large, there are multiple meanings and there are millions of people that believe that meaning is within the context of the whole book. That's the view I now share. So I'm not impressed when people take something out of context because the meaning to me is the whole thing. The point is, meaning is not the same for all groups, so please attend to your own children and not limit the rights of others. Thank you so much.
Anne Marie Johnson, PhD.
My name is Dr. Anne Marie Johnson. My pronouns are she/her/hers and I live in Oshkosh and my daughter graduated last year from Oshkosh North. I want to thank the school board for their work in keeping our schools safe and enriching for all children. I am a white cisgender heterosexual woman and I support having these six books in our, under consideration in the libraries at our schools. Books are a safe place for kids to explore topics that many of us grownups may not feel comfortable discussing with them. So it's important to give access to those kinds of books, especially those with diverse viewpoints and those about sexuality and gender. I believe very strongly in the freedom to read, but today I feel that freedom is in danger. I am familiar with books on the list and I know they would have been valuable to my daughter's learning. I don't know if she read them or not, or if she even wanted to, but we allowed her to read any book she wanted whenever she wanted to. Didn't even matter what age she was, just like my parents did when I was a kid. And my parents, conservative Roman Catholics. A parent can choose to not allow a specific book or series of books to be read by their child, but does not have the right to choose that for anyone else's child. I do want to thank the librarians and teachers in our district who have worked hard to find books that will enrich our children's lives. Please let them continue to do their jobs and leave decisions on books to them and to each child's parent. Please uphold their decisions and vote against Resolution 11.
Thank you. Oh, sorry, I forgot Amanda. Hello, Amanda.
Hello. Hello, my name is Amanda Cramp. I'm a resident of the city of Oshkosh and a parent of two Oshkosh area school district students. I also have a master's degree in library and information studies from the University of Wisconsin-Madison. I love stories. Stories put us in someone else's shoes for a while. I can hunt whales with Ahab or visit Dracula's castle or travel to the land of Oz. That's the point. We can learn about the world around us and the worlds beyond us through literature. It is through books that we learn about the full breadth of the human experience. I am livid that some members of our community want to ban books from the Oshkosh area school district. This is especially alarming considering that the American Library Association, in an interpretation of the Library Bill of Rights, specifically says, quote, "Libraries and their governing bodies shall ensure that only parents and guardians have the right and the responsibility to determine their children's and only their children's access to library resources. Parents and guardians who do not want their children to have access to specific library services, materials, or facilities should so advise their own children." If you do not want your child to read a specific book, that is between you and your child. You do not have the right to take access to a book away from every child in the city because you do not like it. The books that are under attack tonight all contain queer and/or trans characters and people. Do you really think there are not queer and trans kids in Oshkosh area schools? Don't those kids deserve to read about people like them? This is the criteria for selecting library materials from the OASD policy manual, which is Policy 2522. Quote, "Materials should support and enrich the curriculum and/or students' personal interests in learning, meet high standards in literacy, artistic, and aesthetic quality, technical aspects and physical format, be appropriate for the subject area and for the age, emotional development, ability level, learning styles, and social, emotional, and intellectual development of the students for whom the materials are selected. Incorporate accurate and authentic factual content from authoritative sources. Earn favorable reviews in reviewing sources viewed as authoritative by library professionals. Exhibit a high degree of potential user appeal and interest. Represent differing viewpoints on issues of interest. Provide a global perspective and promote cultural diversity and reflect the pluralistic nature of American society by including materials by authors and illustrators of all cultures." All six books that are under consideration meet these criteria. Gender Queer won the Alex Award in 2020. Milk and Honey was on the New York Times Bestseller List for 165 weeks. Let's Talk About It has been praised for inclusivity and is refreshingly honest. Fun Home won the Eisner Award for Best Reality-Based Work in 2007. And the musical based on the graphic novel won the Tony Award for Best Musical in 2015. And the other two books have been compared favorably to Judy Blume's classic novel Forever. Again, if you do not want your child reading these books, books that have won awards and are generally considered to be assets to a school library collection, instruct your child not to read those books. It is crucial for the OASD Board of Education to take a stand against censorship and stand up for intellectual freedom. We cannot cave to homophobic and transphobic threats. Vote no on banning books at our schools.
Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Brooke Behrens. I use they/them pronouns and I live in the city of Oshkosh. What I say tonight is not reflective of any employer or organization I'm with, it's just my own personal experience growing up. I wish, growing up, I had someone I felt safe with as I navigated being queer in high school. I deeply denied it. It was confusing and created shame within myself. If I knew about resources Title IX or books that empowered me in my school library, I definitely would have used them. Growing up in a small rural town, everyone knew everything about other people. I never told friends or teachers because it was such a sensitive topic for me and was not discussed in schools at all, at least my little one. Now I'm happily queer and gender-fluid human, trying to make the world even just a little bit safer, open, and welcoming to our LGBTQ-plus friends, family, and especially our youth in the schools. Did you know that, quote, "LGBTQ-plus young people are more than four times as likely to attempt suicide than their peers"? Johns et al., 2019, Johns et al., 2020, end quote, from Trevor Project. We could save lives by standing up for them, speaking out, being a support system, and having many accessible resources to help them grow and thrive. If books, Title IX, and even conversations are banned or dismissed in our area schools, think of all the youth that are being told they are not accepted, loved, and supported. Think of how they do or will feel so alone and like they do not belong in the world or even just their school. My heart breaks and the tears fall as I type this because chosen family and resources have saved my life. Without them, I would have kept hiding, been withdrawn, felt shame and alone, and maybe not even be here. I never want to go through the shame, denial, and feeling of being unacceptable by others again, the darkest of times and a huge toll on my mental health. To say I'm scared, and so are many others, is a complete understatement. I don't know what will come from the meeting tonight, but I do know so many wonderful people have my back, will still be speaking, and doing the work to help students feel a sense of safety and belonging at every school and beyond. It's not just about books, it's about saving lives. Thank you.
My pronouns are they/them. I live in Oshkosh and I'm a co-founder and a board member of Hope Fringe and Oshkosh Pride. I'm here today to be the adult that I wish would have spoken up to my small-town school board back in the late 1900s. For some people, I know it might seem like their world is changing so fast. I'm sure that must feel scary and sometimes overwhelming. Change will not, or excuse me, change will continue to happen whether we're ready or not. Thankfully, we're here to help each other navigate these changes together. I know that LGBTQ-plus youth, including trans kids, need to see themselves reflected and portrayed in the books available at our public schools because I was an LGBTQ-plus youth and I was a trans kid in a public school and I barely survived without access to LGBTQ-plus books and other support. Because I didn't have the language to, I needed to describe myself as trans when I was in school, I felt alone, depressed, and suicidal throughout my childhood. Instead of feeling like I was part of a community, I felt like I was the only one who didn't belong. I only learned this wasn't true when I was 26 years old and I finally heard the word "non-binary" for the first time. I wish I would have had access to LGBTQ-plus literature when I was in high school. I would have had a much better understanding of myself and of others, and I would have been so much happier and much more confident and hopeful at a young age. Access to LGBTQ-plus books in our public schools is not just for the betterment of LGBTQ-plus students. These books provide valuable information and perspectives to all students while building empathy and understanding for people who are different from the reader. I think we can all agree, the world needs more empathy and understanding and not less. LGBTQ-plus students are already at least four times more likely to attempt suicide today than their peer students because of how they are mistreated and misunderstood by society, including at their schools. Access to the LGBTQ-plus, excuse me, thankfully, as Dr. Samuel Coleman has already made clear. Oshkosh Area School District Policy 2260 addresses our school board's stance on book banning. We do not ban books at OASD. In closing, a line from Henrik Heine, whose books were burned, along with tens of thousands of other burned books, following a Nazi raid in 1933 lest we forget. It reads, quote, "That was but a prelude. Where they burn books, they will ultimately burn people as well." Vote no on banning books.
Save the kids. This shit's ridiculous. Yeah, so what?
Amber, hi. I'm Amber Gilbertson. I'm a resident of Oshkosh, Wisconsin, and I am also a parent of a Oshkosh student. I just want to bring up the stuff that I learned in school, knowledge power. Why would we ban books when it's just different knowledge? Removing books from libraries is just cutting off resources to the most vulnerable populations who need the resources the most. And if we start banning books here with these six books, where do we draw the line? That's all.
Thank you.
As mentioned earlier, I am Devon Rothson. I live here in Oshkosh. I have multiple children in the school district and one who was formerly. When I was a child, I was a voracious reader. I read everything I could get my hands on. When I was like grounded, they grounded me from my books, so I read the street signs to make up for it. I was also a very lonely child. I was searching for somebody, anybody, who reminded of me in any small way. I read to feel less alone. As a few speakers have mentioned, the 2022 National Survey on LGBTQ Youth Mental Health found that 45% of LGBTQ youth seriously considered attempting suicide in the past year. 14% attempted. That's roughly 1 in 7. But we can do something about that. As I mentioned earlier, that same survey found that LGBTQ youth who found their school to be LGBTQ-affirming reported much lower rate of attempted suicide. 89% of LGBTQ youth reported that seeing LGBTQ representation improved their mental health. It is so, so hard to live in a world where you feel unsafe and alone all the time. Having books where I could see myself helped that. My own first suicide attempt was when I was 11. I felt trapped in a body that didn't fit me and in a society that I didn't fit in. And I am so proud of our school district for doing better than how I grew up. I'm so glad that kids nowadays have so many more resources. I'm so happy that these books are in our school library to aid in that. As the quote goes, "We don't want to turn your kids queer. We want your queer kids to survive." Vote no on banning books.
Devon, would you be able to move over to the other side where we have a little bit more room?
There's no accommodation for disabilities here.
We need to work on that.
Wait, they didn't know where it said.
Right, but I'm just saying, if we've got some issues and we have some room over here.
Please, thank you. Is it going to block the timer?
No.
There's room over there, why doesn't he take a chair?
There's a seat right here. Why don't we have tons of seats over there?
Yeah. Wait.
So is disability part of not believing disabled person because this guy doesn't want to sit next to him?
You know, I'm really getting anxiety. How do you not know that's not happening?
Sir?
If you're anxious, why don't you move away from the source of it?
Yeah, if you're so scared.
Okay.
All right, all right. That's enough.
Time.
That's enough.
Okay. Devon?
My God.
Okay. I think we are done with public comments for this evening. I appreciate everyone who came to speak this evening. I'm sorry it ended this way.
That's enough.
Sir?
I'm sorry.
I want to speak to us, especially because I'm a trans, I have that one on me.
You've never seen a voice natural?
Well, at the next meeting, you have the opportunity to say.
Thank you. Appreciate it. We are moving into the consent-related, consent resolution agenda. For the consent agenda, the board's been furnished with background material on each item, or is discussed at a previous meeting. They'll be acted on with one vote without discussion. Is there a motion?
Some moved.
Second. Carolyn Herzog.
Aye.
Abstain.
Wright.
Aye.
Wyman.
Aye.
Harlan.
Aye.
Thank you. And next we have the individually considered resolution number 11, approval of final decision on book reconsideration. Is there a motion, please?
Yeah.
Some moved.
Second.
So I would actually like to propose an amendment to this resolution to separate and vote separately on three books and then three books.
Okay.
Is there a motion for the amendment?
I'll second.
Okay.
Discussion on the amendment. If there's any discussion.
Okay. Discussion on the amendment, please.
So what?
Which three books? Which three books? So, yep, so I would like to separate the Fun Home, Let's Talk About It, and the Gender Queer, Vote on It, and then Vote on the Milk and Honey, and both the Anatomy books.
Would you like to expand?
Yeah, sure. So I did write a little something up and I appreciate everybody coming here and sharing. It's not always easy to talk and share, so I appreciate that. I do want to be clear that this isn't about any specific group of people, and I do realize that I am going to take some heat for this, and that's okay. I did take the time and I read all three of these books in their entirety, and while they may have some educational value, these books contain sexually explicit content. Again, this is not about anything other than the sexually explicit images found within these books. In case you haven't seen it, I do have images to pass around to the board. I don't necessarily think that's appropriate. I trust that everybody has taken the time to review these. But if we look at these images, specifically Fun Home depicts kunglingus. Let's Talk About It shows instruction on female masturbation, and Gender Queer depicts fellatio. I get that this is not pornography and I understand that it is not intended to promote any type of sexual arousal, but my concern is at what point do we allow sexually explicit images in our schools and where and when do we draw the line? Again, to me, this is based solely on the sexually explicit images. We have to remember that those freshmen coming in are 14 years old, and at what extent do parents want to have their children access this material freely? In good faith effort, I don't know if this is a question, I would like to know if there's any type of opt-in or out program that parents can sign up for to ensure if they don't want their children to read this, that that won't happen or that they will not be checking these books out. If, I don't know the answer to that. I don't know if somebody can come up and answer that for me, but at this time, I cannot in conscious faith vote to allow these books to remain in our school. Thank you.
I think Dr. Coleman is coming up to answer the question for you.
Thank you.
Could you clarify which three books those were, please?
Sure. Fun Home, Let's Talk About It, and Gender Queer.
Thanks.
Good evening to the board and Mrs. Dewitt. I want to be sure to respond to your inquiry. There's currently not a process or a system that would allow or restrict students' access to any of the library materials.
Thank you. Any other questions for Dr. Coleman, as long as he's up here in a relationship to this amendment?
I have something to share. Yes, I attended a law conference on February 29th in Appleton, and I specifically attended a session on the banning of books and the legal and cultural and reasons for books remaining on shelves. One of the things that was shared by that group and the session I attended was led by someone from the Boardman Clark Law Office, as well as someone from the school district of Boychvish Bay, who has a law degree. What they shared with us at that time is that if a parent doesn't want a child to read a specific book, they just have to communicate that to their school. They can't say simply, "I don't want my kid to read LGBTQ-plus books." They would have to give specific titles. And that was the result of, let's see, a couple of Wisconsin statutes. I'm sorry, I'm getting emotional about this, having listened to the accounts of the speakers tonight and reading the heartfelt emails that we received from lots of people. There was a Wisconsin statute 121.02, parent 1, parent H, and the Wisconsin Administrative Code, Chapter PI 8, which establishes Wisconsin academic standards. One of those is related to library materials. It reads, "To provide adequate instructional materials, texts, and library services which reflect the cultural diversity and pluralistic nature of American society." I also went to the ALA and I read about the awards that many of these books had received. They struck me as being either written by or about LGBTQ-plus issues, which this conference also addressed. When such materials are removed, it, I'm trying to paraphrase this, a student or community member could file a complaint with the Wisconsin Department of Public Instruction. A student or community member could file a complaint with the Wisconsin Department of Public Instruction. They have the authority to conduct a compliance audit on their initiative in the absence of a complaint. This is considered creating a hostile environment for our students. We, as a board, have continuously said we are about all means all, and that doesn't mean putting in parents except for some subgroup. So I will not support this amendment because I think it's harmful to students, and I think it's out of line with the American Library Association policies on selecting materials for students. Parents do have every right to restrict their child's access to books in our library and to our various academic activities, but they don't have the right to do that for all students in the school district. Thank you.
Thank you.
Since this discussion is a lot about parental rights, you know, et cetera, what does the school district do if parents or guardian or whatnot says, "I don't want my kid to read this book"?
So there are a couple of points that I want to make sure we're clear on. Firstly, these books are located in high schools. So once a student reaches the age of 16 and beyond, as it pertains to the library materials that high school students are accessing, the school is under no obligation to communicate or report that to the parent. The other component that there is in the high school setting particularly, that students have a self-checkout option that's available to them. And so the best protocol I would advise parents to take is if they do not want their students or their child to access library materials, then they are going to have to direct their student or their child not to access those materials. And then if they would like to go through the lengths of checking their backpacks or their books that they have at home to confirm that they don't have those, or certainly within the rights of the parent. But aside from directing their child not to access those books, there are limitations that we have within our processes to be able to prevent a student from being able to check out materials, or maybe not check them out, but just read them while they're in the library without checking them out. So what I want to make sure we're clear on here is there are unreasonable potentially expectations that we aren't able to meet as it pertains to restricting students' access to books that are in the library material because students can access these without checking them out.
Thank you. And, I mean, I have kids in our high school, our kid in our high school, and my kid has a cellphone. And when they turn 16, they, you're starting to be, you're starting to form their own selves. You know what I mean? Whatever that may be. So thanks for sharing that age and process. I appreciate it, so.
Can we call the question to vote on Kelly's amendment?
Yeah, I want to still discuss the amendment here.
Sure.
That I appreciate we're a little...
Absolutely.
Discussing other stuff.
Dr. Hess.
So, Mr. Dewitt, I want to be clear. I think you asked for Gender Queer, Let's Talk About It, and Fun Home to be separated.
Correct.
And then I think you started talking about what you object to is the imagery.
Correct.
And so you want to separate them out. If I tried to read between the lines, I think you're saying you object to those. That must mean you're probably okay with the other ones. And I personally feel like if I can take three books here and have a unanimous approval for it, I would rather have that than risk. So I would be in favor of separating this into two votes so that we can at least get one unanimous vote on this.
Okay. Excuse me, I'm not clear on what the amendment is.
Yes, Sherry, could you read the amendment again, please?
What is that, we, what's the difference between a yes vote and a no vote?
I believe it was to separate it into two different groups. Two different groups.
Yeah, two different books to vote on, yes.
I understand that part, but the way the original amendment, I mean, the original resolution is written, a no vote means that the books will remain on the shelves. A yes vote means that they would be removed. So I'm just, I want to know what I'm voting, how I'm voting, because I know how I want to vote. I want to make sure my vote is cast correctly.
As I understand it, the amendment right now is we are voting on the amendment to separate it into two?
Correct.
Or to not separate it into two?
Oh, it's just to separate it into two.
Just to separate, correct.
So let's call the question.
But can I ask a point of order though? If we, voting on the amendment, we can still have further discussion after the outcome of the amendment?
Right, yeah.
So go back to the original? Go back to the original. Okay. Are we good to call the vote for, into dividing it into two groups? Yes. So a yes means we would like to divide it into two groups. A no means we do not want to divide it into two groups. Correct. Good. Herzog?
No.
Hess?
Yes.
Smitney?
No.
Wright?
No.
Wyman?
No.
Carlin?
No.
Dewitt?
Yes.
Okay, that motion or amendment failed, so let's go back to the original number 11. Discussion.
I don't really have a question, but I do have some points I would like to make. I think we all know that a large part of the reason that I am serving right now on this board is because of literacy. My highest priority is our district putting the curriculum, teaching practices, and staff support in place to ensure that all students have the opportunity to read and learn to read in the Oshkosh area school district. So I find it ironic that we're spending any time talking about limiting reading materials those kids have access to. This is a distraction. I mean, heck, according to much of our data, many high school students in this district do not have the reading skills to even read these books, or many of the other amazing books in our high school libraries. As Michelle Obama mentioned in her speech last week, paraphrasing, banning books doesn't prepare our kids for the future. Instead, it makes us small. And let me tell you, going small is the opposite of what we teach our children. In OASD, we teach our children to dream big, to use their education to empower them to be successful in this life, and to choose what books they want to read, and to have the skills to read those books. We open the world to kids when they can open a book and read it. It is contrary to every part of our mission to propose, is to slam that shut on them. And I know it's not coincidence that the books with LGBTQ+ protagonists, others with strong feminist voices, all empowering those who have long been marginalized, were the ones requested to be removed. To that, I say that representation matters. Studies show that representations matter, that having access to books that reflect our life experiences, that allow you to explore your curiosities, that tackle tough topics in relatable ways, that address changes, things that you might be feeling, that all matters. Most importantly, kids tell us that representation matters. Accessibility to these reading materials encourages engagement, encourages kids to read, and it keeps kids, helps kids feel seen, which is exactly what we're hoping to do in our schools. School and district administration went above and beyond in their responses to these requested book removals. The library specialists followed policy and best practices in making these books available. Admin did the same in the subsequent review. And guess what they found? They found that these books are relevant to high school students. They have been determined to be age-appropriate for the students they are available to by various objective resources. They are award-winning. They are highly interesting and engaging. They have themes of resilience, self-empowerment, grit, and overcoming adversity. Our library, school, and administration staff are hired for a reason. They are the experts. Here, they did their jobs and they did them well. They're ensuring students have access to books that are age-appropriate, engaging, and educational. There is no reason for me or this board to supplant our judgment with theirs. No student is forced to read these books, but also no student in our school should be denied the opportunity to read them, whether because that student cannot read or because the books have been removed from the library. So I'll be voting against this resolution.
Mrs. Carolyn?
I want to begin by thanking all the brave people who spoke this evening in support of Title IX. It took a lot of courage to come tonight, and I appreciate your comments and feedback immensely. Why do we need to keep these books in our library? For the people in this room, for the people who need these books. Banning books goes against everything, I believe, about public education, democracy, and being an American. By removing books from our library, we are essentially passing judgment on the content of that book. We are saying we do not want our students to read that book. What is best for students? We heard from students that these books are valuable to their growth and development. We heard from parents who want us to keep these books in the library because it helps their children. And we heard from a number of community members tonight. I actually forgot the long speech that I prepared to say at home. So before the meeting, I was scrambling to pull together my thoughts, and I thought, "I don't need to share my thoughts. I want to share the thoughts of people that sent us messages." This is from a student. "Please do not remove the books from the library. As a transgender student, I strongly believe these books are important to understanding more about what it's like to be transgender. Some of these books helped me through difficult and dark days." Tonight, we heard from a community member who said these books might have made her journey easier. Another community member said that she felt like she didn't belong, and they wished that they would have had access to resources that made their life easier. From a parent. "If my child decides to enter the high school library and crack open a book, I will applaud him and the teachers that made that happen. High school students are incredibly busy, and often their reading habits begin to dwindle. The library needs to be a safe and welcoming place where we can elect or not elect to pick up and read a text or a book. After all, study after study will point to the benefits of reading. If there's any book that can captivate my teenager's interest in this technological-driven world, then let him read it. There's not a single book in the library that is forced upon a child. The book exists, but only for the interested readers to access. Let him read." From a parent. "I don't want other parents making choices for my child. One parent or a group of parents should not decide what other people's kids can read. Any restriction or removal of book from our libraries would undermine the right of every other parent in the school district to make a choice about what is right for their child. They will always have a choice not to read the books, but banning these books just gives so many others no choice at all." From a community member. "It is critical that students have the opportunity to explore a variety of viewpoints and experiences. Banning books can lead to censorship and the suppression of ideas, which is detrimental to a healthy democracy. Diverse literature helps students develop empathy, understanding, and tolerance for others, which are essential qualities for creating a more inclusive and equitable society." We received many, many more emails that articulated very well the reasons that we should not be banning these books. And I, to the people that did send us emails, thank you very much. Obviously, I read all of them very closely. If you don't like a book, don't read it. Put it down. If you don't like the books that are in the library at our public school, send your kids to private school. I will be voting no to this tonight, and it's not a hard no or a firm no, but it's a never no. Thank you.
Dr. Hess.
When my daughter started high school, she was born in August, so I had a choice of holding her back and letting her go early. Her freshman year, she was 14, the entirety of that year. And I won't disagree with Mr. Dewitt that some of the images in the graphic novels are exceptionally sexually explicit. Now, the question is what to do about that? I am not of the opinion that we remove the books, that I don't, I don't feel one parent, choosing their morality should necessarily get to choose that for everyone else. However, as Dr. Coleman suggested, that we don't have an option to help parents make decisions. I appreciate that you can say, gee, those sexually explicit images, a student could pull out their phone and see something much worse. But so too could a parent apply technology to limit that. And in fact, I think as a school district, I'm assuming our director of IT blocks particular URLs to make sure that those things aren't available. And so I understand that at the moment, we don't have a system to potentially have a parent say, hey, you know, because I did, I did go look in the library catalog, and we've got a system that says, "These are adult books." That maybe we have a system where a parent can come to the district and say, "I would prefer that my 14-year-old child not have access to these books." That, to me, feels like they're right to be able to do this. I appreciate, I think some people have said the argument is, well, you're a parent. Tell your kid not to do that. Well, I can appreciate that, but I see, I feel like if we can provide an opportunity to help them, or even more creatively than that, rather than a parent asking to limit their child, maybe what it is, is a parent opting into a program where if their child does check out a adult book, the parent gets an email to help the parent then be able to have, decide if they want to have a conversation with their child about that book. So I feel like that's just a technological issue. I've heard that we do have self-checkout. I appreciate that. But it's possible that you could find technology to do that. At the end of the day, a library catalog is just a database. It's easy enough to program that, potentially. So I will, I think I'm voting no because I don't want to ban the books. But I would ask that a future direction that we look at is, is there a means to help parents understand what is being checked out or communicate with them so they can have those conversations? Can we get some technology to assist with that?
Dr. Hess, could I suggest when we ask for future agenda items?
Right, I will include it on there.
Yes.
But...
And maybe you can go to policy and governance, and we can have future discussions about that. Okay. I'd like to say just a few things. Thank you to the community for all of the emails. They were, they were great. My opinion is I will be voting no because I had the opportunity to talk to Badger Girls as a speaker there, and one of the questions I asked the group, and it was a very large group, talked to me about banning books. And overwhelmingly, from these high school seniors, juniors, and seniors, they said, "Please don't take away our right to explore, to learn about the people that we want to become. We want to see strong characters, and we want to be able to read to get away from expectations." And my issue with the six books is, what's the next six books? And that's why I will be voting no. I also, when I was, I also read all of the books, and one of the quotes from Milk and Honey really stuck with me. It's four lines. "If you were born with the weakness to fall, you were born with the strength to rise." As I read through all of these books, they all had a meaning of trying to make the situation better, helping the reader understand. And that's the power of books, is allowing the reader some self-help and understanding, or this isn't for me, and you put the book down and you move to something else. It shouldn't curtail our beliefs. It should expand our beliefs. So I will be voting no.
I guess I'm the last one to go. I'm a no as well. Three of us ran for election this last time, and we were asked this question pretty much in all the forums that we had. And I'm not, I am not for banning books. I agree, we could have a discussion about what Tim brought up before. But parents are notified, right from what I heard from Dr. Coleman, that any kid under 16, if anyone is raising a 16-year-old or kid, or is around a kid that is 16 and older, probably one of the least concerns you're going to have is if they go into a library and check out one of these books. Because they will get information from, I mean, they can drive. can drive at that point. They have cellphones. I mean, we're not living in the 1930s, or even the 1990s. And I get that it's, times have changed and things are scary, and it's hard for, I think it's hard on our society sometimes, like, and I hate that we have such tense and really not fun interactions with one another as community members sometimes, over things like this. I really wish as a community we could get, and a nation, we could get back to talking and listening to one another, and trying to understand our differences, rather than trying to use our differences to be wedges against one another. So, that is my hope. Probably isn't going to happen soon. I wish it would. But I'm definitely not here to start cherry-picking which books a 16-year, a kid that's above 16 can or cannot read. So, that's, that's my thoughts.
Thank you. I only have one following comment. I contacted the librarian at West. At the West Library, we have 15,560 books, and if that isn't a wonderful thing, that our children have the opportunity to read through 15,000. And that's credit to the entire school district for understanding how important reading is, and getting the books into the library for our children to enjoy and learn more about the world. Okay, call the vote, please.
Wait a second.
I'm sorry, Doctor Hess.
I'm fine, I'm fine. I, you know, I got a little emotional here, and I think I'm, my heart rate has come back, come back down. I truly believe that all means all, and we have to make sure that we're supporting all of our students and ensuring their success. I'm very concerned about some of the things we heard tonight relative to students being bullied and not being able to be themselves. So, I think that, that's another issue that needs to be addressed vigorously in our district beyond these six books. I am not about book banning. I just think that we heard a lot of very compassionate and heartfelt comments tonight, and from people who wrote us emails. I also want to thank the West staff, who were part of the review process following our policy, and the diligent work that they exhibited in reaching their conclusion that these books should remain on the shelf, as well as Dr. Coleman, because he was the next step in the process, and he reviewed those with a great deal of dignity and respect. And so, I want to thank the people who were involved in those reviews, as well as those who have shared with us, either via email or tonight. So, again, I will be voting no. I want these books to remain on the shelves to support our students, and whether they're LGBTQ+ kids, or kids who need to develop empathy toward their fellow students. Thank you.
Thank you. Please call the roll. Hess?
No.
Smeltney?
No.
Wright?
No.
Wyman?
No.
Carlin?
No.
Dewitt?
Aye, yes.
Herzog?
No.
Resolution failed. We have one more individually considered resolution this evening, it's number 12, Approval of One-Year Waiver of Administrative Guideline 3125, Wisconsin Educator Licensing. So, second. Herzog?
Carlin.
Discussion, please. Doctor Herzog.
Thank you, Mrs. Wyman. I spent 10 years at UW-Oshkosh in the College of Education and Human Services, where I worked in an office that provided opportunities for teachers to add additional teaching licenses. One of the things that we looked to do in that program was to preserve the dignity and the rigor of a teacher education program. And there are programs out there that allow a person to get a teaching license in the state of Wisconsin who has no degree in education, has a degree, but it might be in business, it might be in, I don't know, engineering. But they don't have to be in a classroom, they sit in front of a computer, they read, they answer questions, they never step foot in the classroom. I've seen the curriculum as recently as five years ago, the materials related to student management and discipline were from the 1920s, not the 2020s, the 1920s, and included writing as punishment, and having the parent sign off, and various things. So, I will, I am voting in favor of this, because the people who are seeking to move to another certification area have already a student on. That's not a question, they know how to teach, they know about student management and lesson planning and curriculum development. But a program where you sit behind a computer at your own pace, and you never set foot in a classroom, you never interact with kids, maybe your degree is in business, I'm not knocking business majors, but I'm just saying, there's a big difference between a business degree and an education degree in helping kids move forward in their learning and their literacy, in particular. Thank you.
Any other comments?
No.
Call the roll, please. Wright?
Aye.
Wyman?
Aye.
Carlin?
Aye.
Dewitt?
Aye.
Herzog?
Aye.
Hess?
Aye.
Smeltney?
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you. Request for future agenda items? Doctor Hess?
Yes, I would like for us to explore options to allow parents to potentially limit access to, or notify them to facilitate. So, I would imagine maybe that's education and then policy and governance. That's what I was going to recommend, let's start in education to be able to work out some of the details, and if it gets to our, to policy, then let's work through that one.
Sounds great. Any other requests for future agenda items? Announcements? Doctor Herzog?
Thank you, I just have one. The Wisconsin Association of School Boards has a publication called The Wisconsin School News. It has a featured article this month on our Oshkosh Adapted Sports League. So, I want to thank Mrs. Piran and adapted PE teacher Marshall Moran, who coordinated the league this year. There's some wonderful photos in there, and I also want to commend Drew Nihans, who has an article in this publication on page 22, entitled "Everything's Going Up Except Our Healthcare Costs." So, thank you, Drew, for the, for your article, and thank you for, to everyone who's involved in the adapted PE league. It's another example of inclusion in our community. Thank you.
Okay. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second. That's right.
Darn it. Molly's second.
No, it's okay, I'll get it one more time. Call the roll, please. Smeltney?
Aye.
Wright?
Aye.
Wyman?
Aye.
Oh, aye.
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 Aye.